Good afternoon. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council's special meeting on Tuesday, December 6, 2022 at 3:00 p.m. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. David Lane.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then item four is vote to adjourn to executive session. Item one is discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney of the public body, letter A for the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 9.26, cabarets. We have a motion and a second to move over to executive session. We are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now adjourn over to executive session and we'll reconvene after executive session. So those of you that are here in the audience, we will be in a meeting for an hour or two and then we'll come back and reconvene to this meeting. So, thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back to the Lake Havasu City Special Council Meeting on Tuesday, December 6, 2022 at 3:00 p.m. We will now move on to item seven on our agenda, which is a public hearing. Item 7.1 is discuss and possible action if necessary to comply with Arizona open meeting laws following the executive session noticed above regarding a Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 9.26, cabarets. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Garry, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We met this evening in executive session to discuss the cabaret chapter of the Lake Havasu City Code. We discussed that the cabaret code as it's written is unconstitutional. It's unconstitutional because it is overbreadth. An ordinance is impermissibly overbroad if it regulates more speech than necessary to protect a compelling government interest, or stated otherwise, regulates a substantial amount of constitutionally protected expression. Stated more simply, so the definitions contained in the cabaret code are overbreadth. So they include dance and performance regardless of whether it falls under the category of an adult business. The intent of that code originally, back in 1993, was really focused on adult-oriented businesses. For example, if I wanted to go and maybe sing a song or play guitar in an establishment in Lake Havasu City that is licensed to sell alcohol, and I had my guitar open or I had a tip jar out, I would be in violation of the cabaret code. There is nothing about that cabaret, nothing about me performing in that way that poses any risk to the community or would make you want to regulate my protected activity. Because that falls into that definition, it makes it overbreadth. It's legally unenforceable. Currently, activities such as drag shows are constitutionally protected, and there are no actions that the city can do constitutionally to prohibit or further restrict drag shows. My favorite quote from Texas v. Johnson Supreme Court case, "If there is a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment, it is that the government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because society finds the idea itself offensive or disagreeable."
Thank you, Ms. Garry. So this is a public hearing. We do have three citizens that have signed up to speak during this public hearing item. And again, we are here to discuss the item of the Lake Havasu City Code, Chapter 9.26. Your comments will be limited in time. There is a light indicator box. The green light means you have time. One minute remaining is when the light will turn yellow, and at red is when the time has expired. So just to give you a heads up, we allocated two hours to this meeting, so we're going to try and get through the comments within that timeframe total. So we'll start with Chris Guilfoyle.
Guilfoyle.
Guilfoyle, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, good evening or good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and residents. My name is Kristin Guilfoyle. I was here at the September 27 City Council meeting and brought the cabaret city code to your attention. I told you that I'm an LGBT ally and I never once talked about censoring or stopping the event from happening. I spoke to all of you about my personal experiences of going to drag shows and told you that it was strictly for adult entertainment only for 21 and older and shouldn't be performed in front of children. I respectfully waited for the city attorney and all of you to go over it and realize that the London Bridge Resort would be in violation of city codes in regards to minors in attendance. Why did this have to be taken to an executive session? I was open and transparent with you and the residents. Why are you now hiding behind closed doors? I am not happy to hear that our own city attorney with the large salary couldn't figure this out on her own. Also, we have a council member, Lane, who is a retired police officer. Between these two people, you couldn't figure out a simple code? I am dismayed to hear that taxpayer money was spent to consult with other people in regards to a simple city code. How much did this really cost the taxpayers? I'm also dismayed with you, Mayor Sheehy, as well. Why haven't you recused yourself personally and professionally from this issue? You are the vice president and general manager of the London Bridge Resort and will be profiting off this event. I also hear that you will be leaving town when the event is going to take place. Why would you leave and why wouldn't you attend to make sure everything goes well, especially while the cash bar is being in operation? Why do we only have two city council members understanding that this isn't a good idea for children to be in attendance at an adult show? Why do we have to start, do, excuse me, do we have to start protesting in front of other council members' businesses and making our voices heard loud and clear on social media that your business has gone woke and thinks it's okay to support children going to adult entertainment venues exposing them to this? Because once you go woke, you go broke. Can we say Balenciaga? Is this really about parents exercising their parental rights here? Or is it something more dark and sinister going on? Because if that's the case of this being parental consent, why not let the parents take their kids to bars and drink with them? Why can't kids go to strip clubs with their parents? Why not let parents have kids buy their alcohol and cigarettes for them? Why not let kids drive their drunk parents home after the show? Why not let kids vote? Why not let kids stay at home alone? Even parents have limitations on what they can consent their child to do morally under the ages of 18 and 21. And lastly, if you don't care about morally and legally protecting our kids in this city, then can you at least do it for us adults who want to enjoy an adult show without feeling creepy and uncomfortable, seeing children being subjected to men dressed as women performing vulgar adult content in front of kids? And let's not forget, two teachers were just fired for filming adult content off duty at a school for their OnlyFans account. Do the right thing. No kids allowed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. But again, the cabaret code, it does not have anything to do with drag shows. So it has nothing to do with drag shows whatsoever.
Okay, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, the cabaret code that we're here talking about on this agenda item doesn't have anything to do with drag shows.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Garry gave a report about what we talked about. Drag shows are protected as a constitutionally protected.
And I'm not trying to censor or stop the drag show. I believe in freedom of expression and I love going to drag shows. I've made that perfectly clear and I've been to them.
Yes, our cabaret code, it has nothing to do with drag shows or does not regulate drag shows.
Okay, but it talks about the buttocks area, the breast area, it talks about the opaqueness of clothing. So really, what is it about then? Could you answer that, county attorney?
Yeah, it does not have anything to do with that. So thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the next speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Patty Brubaker.
Hi, I'm Patty Brubaker, and I'm short. And I thank you guys for taking the time to listen to us. I'm speaking from my heart, not necessarily directly to the code. And I'm going to have to read this because I may have to stop for a bit. I urge you all to watch your installment, I urge you all to re-watch your installment as elected members of the Lake Havasu City Council this past November 22. I would advise you to recall the pledge you made and swore to uphold under oath. It is my understanding that part of your job is to listen to and respond accordingly to your constituents without imparting your own opinion or personal bias. It is we, your constituents and salary payers, who elected you to this position because we trusted, we trusted you to listen to us and deal with issues we bring before you. But our words seem to have fallen on deaf ears and hardened hearts. The concern we bring to you has nothing to do with politics. Rather, our plea is for the protection of the innocence of our children. I know you've heard this before, but have you really listened? We are not fighting against the upcoming drag shows, although many of us don't appreciate them being here. But adults can make their own decisions and choices in adult matters. This is not a situation where an adult can make a choice for a child that could have negative consequences for that child. Bring on the show. But I, we beg you, do not allow admittance of children under the age of 18. It would be on all of us should the exposure of this type of entertainment influence and confuse children who are in stages of choosing how to make good decisions. Please, let the children be children, unencumbered with exposure to situations they can't understand. Let us choose to do the right thing and just let kids be kids and do kid things. I ardently ask you to, sorry, to remember the pledge you made to your constituents who pay your salaries and have trusted you. Voters have good memories. And this was just the last thing that I, oops. As I was getting dressed today, I chose this shirt just to celebrate the season. Then I looked down and thought, perfect. So let's celebrate the children, not confuse them. Please, let's celebrate the children, not confuse them.
Thank you, Patty.
I have one little tiny bit to leave you with. I want to leave you with these words from Nelson Mandela that he spoke in May of...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Brubaker, your time is up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. But you know, this, when it comes to this sexually oriented businesses, they are regulated by state law and state code, similar to other issues that state code represents. It, we only have certain options. And as was mentioned earlier, the constitutionality of having a drag show is protected under the Constitution. The next speaker is Debbie Fiedak.
Did I get my time on the clock?
No, your time is up, but yeah.
We're not talking about law. We're not talking about politics. We're talking about protecting innocent children.
We are, we make law, that's what we do, so we have to be talking about the law. Debbie?
Yes. In, I would like to address something that Chris, yeah, that Chris said. I'm looking at the actual code for the cabaret law, and it says the council for Lake City, for, excuse me, for Lake Havasu City finds that the combination of alcohol beverages and erotic stimulus is likely to increase the incidence of prostitution and sexual assault, da-da-da-da. So the cabaret law isn't what you're saying. It is talking about any erotic stimulus, and that is exactly what the drag show is. So that, it does fit in this. It's not specifically saying it, but it does fit the criteria in which that, that code was for, anyway. This is what I prepared. In September, I spoke here at the council meeting. I shared the depravity of the drag show, taking all the information straight from the website. Maybe you remember the raunchy names of the performers and the fact that the adults, the adult entertainment with alcohol and children would get in free. But the kicker was the pedophile flag colors and the symbol proudly displayed. These people performing for our children are pedophiles. They aren't even hiding it. They may not be touching our kids, but they are getting aroused by the children's reactions. People at the council meetings have shared living in abusive households where parents aren't safe, and pastors shared how depicting women as clown whores is bad for children and for women. But you are unmoved. You can stop the abuse of our children. You can stop the outrage of the community. You could have handled all of this in August, but you didn't. Why? You are more concerned with angering the event planners than you are with angering the people who are your bosses. It is your hard hearts, big egos, and arrogance that have brought us here. Updating the city's cabaret law to mirror the state law, which is long overdue, gives you the opportunity to put an end to the public outcry and to save your reputations.
Thank you. That concludes speakers. We have one more speaker that signed up, and then we'll open it up to Patty Villaneda. Okay, please.
Good afternoon. Nice to meet you. My name is Patty Villaneda. I came to Lake Havasu about two or three years ago. I have two adult children, which one is in the Air Force and the other one is in the Navy, which was very hard to raise in California because, you know, you just have to keep an eye on them. But whatever it took, soccer, Boy Scouts, and, you know, religious education. Anyway, I'm just, I just have a few questions, which I'm a little bit confused. You keep bringing, it's, you know, protected by state code and there's constitutions and, but you are not giving us the code and section of what is protecting this type of show. So I will like that information if you're so kind and forgive my ignorance, I'm not an attorney, but I'm a grandmother that is protecting her, you know, her grandchildren. Also, another question is, I understand that some of you have businesses in town, so wouldn't that be a little bit of conflict of interest when you vote or you are supporting this immoral show, which, you know, could lead the children to be confused? So as a mayor, do you take off your hat and, as a mayor, and then, you know, you can, as far as your business or owner of a hotel, as well as a restaurant that Mr. Moses owns as a family restaurant, wouldn't that be a conflict of interest?
Yes, so thank you for your questions. We're not voting on allowing for a drag show to occur or not occur. That's not an action in front of the council at all. So there would be no conflict there. But a conflict of interest would be defined when someone personally benefits. So if we're doing something for the good of a whole, there isn't there, excuse me, we're not voting on whether a drag show should occur or should not occur. So that's not an issue in that respect. I don't know, Ms. Garry, if you could talk a little bit about the sexually oriented businesses in state law from a broad perspective?
Yes, so from a broad perspective, state law allows municipalities to regulate sexually oriented businesses. They provide what the, oh, I'm sure, yep. So the state law allows municipalities to regulate sexually oriented businesses.
Okay, state, I'm sorry to interrupt, state law. So which code or section will be that? And then you, if I remember?
We don't have that. We don't have that in front of us right now.
Okay, that'll be interesting to, for us that are, I mean, especially for me, that I'm not an attorney and, you know, I'm just a regular, you know, a regular grandmother that could look up that section in code. And you also mentioned in a little bit earlier that there was a case, plaintiff and defendant, I think you mentioned earlier concerning...
No.
City council, city attorney, I'm sorry, you mentioned something about, let me, let me go ahead and go back.
I read a quote from a Supreme Court case, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we could have that information. That'll be, you know, you know, that'll be educational for, for us that are not attorneys. And, you know, we could go ahead and, you know, be educated and instruct, you know, instruct ourselves, but, yeah, well, those were my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any additional feedback, Ms. Garry?
So municipalities are allowed by state law to regulate sexually oriented businesses. It's contained in the Arizona statutes. You can find it in ARS, Section 13, 1422. The state statutes are what provide the definitions of what adult entertainment is, an adult business, an adult cabaret, what certain activities, what certain, they provide all the definitions that would constitute what a sexually oriented business means in the state of Arizona.
Thank you.
All right, I really didn't prepare anything, but my name's Kelly Meister. I'm here because this kind of affects my daughter, who plays in two bands. So I looked up the word cabaret. It means entertainment held in a nightclub or restaurant while the audience eats or drinks at tables. The second definition of it is a nightclub or restaurant where entertainment is performed. So I, I spoke with our county, our city attorney earlier, and she gave me a little bit of insight about this, that yes, that this does, this law that the city has on the books right now does constitute all of our bands that play locally, live, BJ's, Kokomo's, or Jeremy's Juke Joint, Ricketty Crickets, et cetera, et cetera, where my daughter's, two bands have played. So that's why I'm here, because this law affects hers. And so actually, she's broken, broken this law. But while you guys were in session, we were having our own session, and some people were trying to convince me that this had to do with other things. However, being that I have a criminal justice degree, I was a little bit wiser and stuck to my guns. So anyways, so everybody wants to speak about this drag show and about how it's influencing the kids. Well, let me explain to you one thing. I was one of those LGBT teens back when I was 15, 16 years old, and I wanted to commit suicide because I had nowhere to go to say, hey, Kelly, guess what? You are normal. You are not a freak. You are a human being. You are one of God's kids. And no, there is life out there after you're 18. And when you turn 18, look what is out there that you can explore. And this show is going to present this to these teenagers, some of the LGBT teenagers that have been at my house, that my ex-wife and I've had to support, had to give a room to because their parents have kicked them out of their homes. Yes, so that's why I've been here on the fight. And yes, that's why I do know it is about the children, and I do know it's about the LGBT community. And we are not pedophiles. I'm sorry, I've got to finish my statement. Most straight men are the pedophiles, and that is statistically proven. I was molested by my grandfather, a straight male. I can't believe I just announced that to public. So there are many others, thank you, there are many others out there like myself that have been molested by straight men, not drag queens. So we need to get over this, that drag queens are pedophiles, or that we are, or that they are groomers. You people make me sick. And by the way, as a gay woman, I raised three straight daughters, three beautiful straight daughters. So anyways, I'm thankful that we've brought this up, and thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during this public hearing?
My name is David Leslie. Just a comment that I think you guys missed the mark. We're here about underage children, make no mistake about it, and they are the victims. This is underage children. I know some people sit up here and talk about the cabaret law, et cetera, et cetera, maybe you hired a lawyer. You are a control mayor, and you are benefiting, make no mistake. So it's about underage children. I hope that registers in your minds, underage children. We're losing our moral values here. Council Lady Nancy Campbell said, we need to put more morals into our advertising. I agree with that 100%. We failed. And you opened up the conversation, Mayor, by letting these people come in here and basically allowing these underage children. It's happening across the nation. And you always say, don't talk about things outside of the city limits. You always make that because you know what's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Leslie, for your comments. Councilmember Campbell, did you have a comment that you?
Yes, and first off, I want to thank everybody for taking the time and allowing us to have this process in place. You all, I asked you to just hang tight, and we're going to try and work through it. And I didn't know, you guys gave me a cabaret code, and I had never seen it before. I went to city attorney and asked her some questions. And because of the Constitution that we all truly believe in and support, there are state statutes, you know, like when we said that we hate the short-term rental issue? And why can't we just tell people what they can do with their house while we're governed? What I found out today is we're under some government laws that protect this feeling of expression. That's what it's protecting. But what we did, what I did find out today is that we have a heck of a police force. We have a heck of a community, and there is no way to regulate this the way I would have liked to seen it. I was hoping, like you hoped, that we could take the cabaret code and say, no children under the age of 18, done and done. Why has it taken so long? Because it didn't work out that way. And all I have to say is, we have to depend on our police department and our state legislators to make sure our children are protected based on the sexual orientation state statutes that are in place already to protect our children. And I know that our police have been working due diligently, reviewing old videotapes and doing everything they can to protect our beautiful little city, and your voice has brought it to our attention. And I don't want people to bring children to drag shows. But I ask all of you, if you are uncomfortable with this, instead of attacking these businesses that have no control, but to act, or the council members, because you know, I've been knee-deep in trying to figure this out long with you. I ask you to please understand that we've done our due diligence, and what we found out is this old outdated code, there, we could just keep garbageing it up, but it's just going to be thrown away. And again, I don't want to say no tipping to people in a bar that's playing a song that might have a bad word in it. This is what we open ourselves up to. So I hope I haven't said too much, and I hope I'm not in trouble, but I hope that moving forward, we can understand as a community, we have to come together. And if you want to peaceful protest this particular event, show them how proud we are of Lake Havasu City and how we can peaceful protest and how we can tell parents that we are really concerned. But as you see, this is a very... But as you see, this is a very political, very viable, like I say one thing and I get attacked by 15 other people. And you all have been there, and we just need to unite and understand that this council did everything they could. We were listening, we pushed the ball forward, and this is where we're at. I hope you, I hope you understand.
Yeah, please, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Hadassah Golden. I keep hearing you guys saying that you're not taking a vote on whether or not to permit a drag show, but I'm a little confused because I, I have not heard anybody say that they're trying to get the drag show taken away altogether. I've heard people say, what are the things that we can look at to make sure that children in our community are not being exposed to sexually provocative material? So now that we're looking at the cabaret code, and this is obviously not, I mean, my understanding, and you kind of just confirmed it, is that's why this came up, was because so many people were talking about the drag show thing, so the cabaret code was potentially a way to regulate it, and now we see it's not. What is the next step? Because I feel like a lot of times, people just look at these things as black and white issues, either you're, you know, you hate the LGBTQ community if you don't want kids at a drag show, and it's like, nobody actually is saying that, or that you think it should just be a free-for-all, like, there's a gray area in the middle, and I feel like a lot of your constituents are telling you that they want to see, okay, what are we going to do about that gray area? How do we get both of our needs met? And I'm, I'm curious, what is, I wrote all these notes, I didn't even look at any of them. I want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything, but, I mean, I, I don't know if it's that, I mean, I feel like you're admitting that it is adult entertainment, so I'm confused. Is it that you don't agree that drag shows are adult entertainment, or is it that it's a gray area that we need to look into further, and there's a definition that we need to get to the bottom of legally? Or is it that, yes, it is adult entertainment, but if we say anything about restricting it, we're going to be, you know, what's the word? Like squashing people's freedom of expression? People can have freedom of expression, and consenting adults can do whatever they want, but bringing kids into it, it's really serious. I mean, I've been a childcare provider for more than two decades. I come from a family where lots of people in my family were molested by their father or their uncles, like, it's making me emotional just thinking about it, the scars that, that leaves in people's lives. And it's not to say that drag queens as, I forget your name, I'm sorry, but that drag queens are pedophiles. Any person who wants to be a predator and sees, oh, this is a great way to access children, look at this event, can go there, and it's, it's really, really dangerous for our community. And I work with Parks and Recs. A lot of these kids in the community are already at risk in a lot of ways, like, I know them personally. So what is the next step? Like, please don't just be, okay, well, we checked the box, we looked into the cabaret code and shove it under the rug, like, we're really concerned, for good reason. And we do see things happening around the country. I mean, I don't know if you guys have seen these videos and pictures of what's happening at family-friendly drag shows. It's not family-friendly. So I don't know if you can respond to that, but I am curious what the next step is, and what is the police presence going to be like at this event to make sure that things are safe?
Yeah, no, thank you for, for your questions and clarification. So it's, as far as what can we look towards, is we can look towards our history. So this event was here last year, and there were no kids there. It was--
But then why are they pushing so hard to make kids be allowed if no kids came? Why do they care then?
Yeah, it doesn't say, it doesn't say anywhere that kids are allowed. It says--
Yeah, they can go for free.
It said all, no, it did not, it said all ages are welcome, period.
For free with a parent.
If you're under 18 years of age, you must be accompanied by a parent. The marketing was, the marketing was eventually changed, that first sentence was removed after we had public testimony here, maybe a month and a half ago, where a citizen suggested that that might be a compromise. So there, there were no children in the past. Our police department will, will be available for that event, just like they are for every other event that we have in Lake Havasu City. This is a safe community, we understand what, what it, how important it is to our citizens and also to people that visit our community, that we remain a safe community, but we're fully prepared for this event, just like we would be for any other event.
What's the next step, though? Like, beyond that? Because then, three, year three and year four and year five--
Yeah, sure.
We're not going to stop. We know people who were molested by their fathers.
Yeah, no, great question. So next step would be to reach out to your state legislatures, legislators, because it's state law that predicates what that is. So when it comes to the, the definition of sexually oriented businesses, that's, that's a state statute that predicates basically all of that for the state of Arizona. So it would be reaching out--
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes.
That was related to what I already said. I saw some nodding and some shaking when I asked about, are we in agreement that drag shows are adult entertainment? Like, I, I feel like that is the thing that we're not all on the same page about. Like, on one hand, I'm hearing it seems like we are acknowledging that it's adult entertainment, and then on the other hand, it, it seems confusing to me. Like, where, where do we stand on that?
Well, there's not a position of the city council on, on what that is. We're, we're here to talk about a cabaret ordinance, and, and you're here to talk about a drag show and children attending.
Well, because that's why the cabaret thing came up, is it was--
Yeah, but it wasn't, when it was in, put in place in 1993, it was, had nothing to do with drag shows. It doesn't do anything to regulate drag shows. So some of you earlier had mentioned that you're here because it's for the children and, and what, what that looks like. Drag shows are constitutionally protected. It's a, it's constitutionally protected form, form of expression. So there, there isn't any additional regulation or prohibition that we can do to that. So you asked for what your next step would be--
To go to the state.
State, the state legislature and state law would have to be, would have to be adjusted.
And you're having police officers present at this event, for sure, keeping an eye on things.
We will have law enforcement, like we do at all events.
And to give you guys a little bit of comfort, what we see on the national news is pretty extreme. And remember when Black Lives Matter came here, and then, I remember my son, who owned Psycho Therapy, was gathering up a bunch of bicycles, and he was taking them home because he was afraid that he might be looted, like you saw on the other national. What did our community do? We came together, we had massive police force, we gave them extra funding to do that, plus our community came together, and they had the most peaceful, I think, Black Lives Matter protests, walked down McCulloch, and they packed up their stuff and they left. Let's keep that going. Let's keep the message going without destroying each other in the meantime. That's all I can ask of you at this time.
I appreciate that comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple clarifications. Go Lake Havasu, our taxpayer dollars, had the flyer up until a week and a half ago. On the flyer, all ages welcome, children free. That's a fact. Mayor she-he, he-she, I mean, she-he, that's a fact. And then additionally, you guys, the flyer was taken off, and this is Go Lake Havasu. Why are they promoting this when they didn't even do the Constitution until a week before it came? Go Lake Havasu has been promoting this drag show since the summertime, because in June, they're like, hey, come, come down, you can get, you know, cheaper, or you can meet everybody if you get it before September. Okay, so that's it. So regarding the drag show, nobody says, don't have the drag show. When city, city lawyer came back, not one thing was said about the children. Again, the focus is, this is all about the children. We have Councilman Dolan, he's on Go Lake Havasu Committee. So why would Go Lake Havasu, with our tax dollars, promote this with all children available? All children get to come for free, for free. This is just beyond insanity. So anyway, bottom line is, have the constitutional right for the drag show, express the way you want, that's not even an issue. But not one person came back after all of our taxpayer dollars, again, for this council, came back and said anything about the children. And that's the bottom line, guys. It's always been, why would children be allowed, they can't drive themselves, be allowed to be taken by other people to an event where men are dressing scantily in women's clothing, mocking women, drinking alcohol, and you've seen them provocatively. Now I know that it's not the cabaret law, so that means that's six feet apart, and the cabaret law doesn't even apply to drag shows, so kids can put money in their, in their G-strings. So we're keeping the focus. The focus is, no children at the drag show, Go Lake Havasu promotes it. You guys are on the board, and you know about this, and we've been talking about this since day one. It's real simple, guys, it was a simple ask, a simple ask. We don't know if these are their parents, so why are children allowed? Real simple ask. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during this public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to council for possible motion or direction.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I make a motion to direct the city attorney to proceed as directed in the executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight on our agenda is adjourned. Do you have a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for all being here. Be kind, and we'll see you next time.